Or Golick, roll call? Oh, sorry.
Eternal God our Father, Lord God, we come against you and thank you, Lord God. Lord God, as we get ready to end the, end of this school year, Lord God, I'm just asking that you keep every one of our students safe, Lord God, this summer. Lord, cover each and every teacher, Lord God, cover our police and our fire, Lord. Lord, as we continue to do your will and His counsel, Lord God, continue to give us guidance, continue to grant us with your grace and your mercy, in Jesus' name, amen.
Clerk Golick, roll call?
Alexander.
Present.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Calwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Ricles. Tyler.
Here. Let the record show eight in chambers, uh, one virtual. Mayor?
Hi, thanks, Councilman. Uh, good to see everybody, welcome back. Uh, I missed the last meeting. Uh, Phil, uh, the Chief of Staff, Phil Talon, gave the message from the mayor and I read over the meeting minutes and Phil mentioned some things I wanted to reiterate on. So my report's gonna be a little bit longer today, it won't be too long, so. Last meeting, Phil mentioned the accomplishments of the Capital Improvement Board. I sent all of you a copy of the Capital Improvement Board cumulative summary, um, you should have all received that before the last meeting. To summarize, sixteen million dollars in multi-district expensive projects, uh, were approved by the Capital Improvements Board up through last year. Projects that were hard to finance with our old system of distributing gaming money, uh, very proud of that. Uh, Phil also mentioned that the system wasn't perfect and I agree with that as well. It's a new thing we started, um, and, you know, obviously, sometimes you don't work things out perfectly the first time, so if there is suggestions on how to make Capital Improvement Board better, I'm all ears. Uh, so, thank you, I wanted to point that out. Phil also, uh, mentioned the Gaming Advisory Committee has recently donated five hundred and twenty thousand in not-for-profits, mostly not-for-profits located in the city of Hammond. We went back and tallied all of the gaming money that we've distributed since I've been mayor, going all the way back to two thousand four. We've given eleven million dollars out to not-for-profits in the last twenty years, which, you know, these are great not-for-profits in our city that help a lot of people, very proud of that. Last but not least, I wanted to point something out for Councilman Tyler. He was very instrumental in ensuring that we created a rainy day account, it was something that he was probably, you know, talking about a lot when he first became a Councilman. We created the Rainy Day Fund when we created the Capital Improvement Board, along with the Gaming Advisory Committee, and I'm happy to report that we have one point four million dollars in the Rainy Day Fund, sitting there, just collecting interest, so that's great news. Uh, so I think we should all be very proud of ourselves when you think about in the last four years what we've done. We've changed the way we, we do finances in the city of Hammond. I know a number of you mentioned that during your campaigns, that we spend money that we only have instead of spending money that we anticipate. And that in itself was huge, and quite frankly, if we didn't do that, we'd be experiencing a lot of trouble right now because horseshoe casinos, gaming revenues have been down pretty dramatically over the last year. And are, under our old system, it would have taken us a year to react to that, so. Um, over the last few weeks, I've attended, uh, on behalf of the city, antisemitism training with, uh, region political leaders and numerous law enforcement officials at the temple in Munster. Uh, was put on by the Jewish Federation in Northwest Indiana, attended along with, uh, Chief Andy Short and Chief Jeff Long. Uh, attended a funeral of Rajish Bagwandan, uh, who's the young man who was murdered on one hundred and sixty-fifth street in Hammond. I attended that with Chief Long and Chief Short, uh, that was a road rage incident, very tragic. Attended the Lake County Community Advancement Meeting, featuring House Lager with my Economic Development Team. Uh, also with the Economic Development Team, attended the ICSC Conference in Las Vegas, uh, along with the Redevelopment Commission as well. MLK Park is open, up and running, very proud, everything's gone very well so far, parking work is working very well, uh, so it's been a very positive experience so far. We opened it on May sixth, we held a press conference, myself, Councilman Tyler, Councilwoman Katrina, we're in attendance. Uh, Chief Short, Pastor Polk, Coach, uh, Larry Moore from Hammond Central Basketball Team was there, uh, I think, uh, we all impressed upon the people using the park, that we need to take care of this park better, and let's just hope everybody's listening and it keeps on being a great place that it always has been. Uh, Megan gave me an update about the new software system that's going in. In two thousand twenty-one, uh, we all committed to purchasing new financial and permitting software, uh, our previous system was over thirty years old. So as you can imagine, it was fairly out of date by that time, I think we were still using DOS when I took over as mayor. Uh, the new software is called Tyler Technology, it's being implemented in three different phases. The finance portion concluded on May first and the city is now live for accounts payable and accounts receivable, which was a big first step. This took a couple of years to get ready for. Second phase is focused on the permitting and licensing, which starts in mid-May. The third phase focuses on HR and payroll, this phase is set to begin in late June. The new software will make operations more efficient for both city employees as well as, as the general public. And the sanitary district and the water department are also in the process of moving to the same software. So, for the first time in over three decades, we've upgraded our software system and it'll affect how we do business and how the public does business with us, so. Uh, I want to congratulate Megan, that's been a monumental job that she's been doing. Uh, toured the Northwest Indiana Home and LLC, which is the bank located on, uh, the former Bank Calumet Building. To remind you, that's a twenty-eight million dollar investment, a hundred market rate units, eight thousand square foot of retail space. Uh, they received five million dollars, excuse me, six million dollars in TIF. Uh, we had to change that because of some things that happened with inflation and supply chain issues. Uh, everything's going really well there, I know the council also had a tour of the building, I think it's going swimmingly, looking forward to it opening. Uh, met with, uh, firefighters at Station Eight, uh, forgot what shift it was, but we had our normal meeting with them. We held Mayor's Night Out in the second district, I want to thank Councilman Torres for hosting a lively Mayor's Night Out, well-attended. Uh, update you on Norfolk Southern upwa- update, we had a community meeting on Norfolk Southern. The Governor's Parkway proposal is a twelve million dollar bridge, we're receiving about ten million dollars from Indot. Indot's designing and constructing the bridge, we are merely bystanders watching this take place. What we do is give the other twenty percent, that's about all we do, if we're chosen by Indot to go ahead and go forward with this. I acknowledge that Governor's Parkway in itself doesn't solve one hundred percent of the problems that were identified in, uh, Hesville when you have stop trains, but I think this is gonna solve a lot of them. Uh, seventy-five percent of the problems, the other twenty-five percent of problems are caused when kids who live south of Orchard, south of Scott Middle School, they get blocked by the Norfolk Southern that are tempted to use, to cross the trains by foot or to climb over the stop trains. That situation won't be solved most likely with Governor's Parkway. However, I do want to point out that the city administration's in discussions with Norfolk Southern as we speak, uh, the Federal Railroad Administration's involved, it's going very well. I think that I'll be happy to report down the road that we're gonna solve the other twenty, twenty-five percent of the problems in Hesville, which is the kids that are tempted to climb over stop trains. I myself spoke with the CEO of Norfolk Southern, we had a great conversation, Federal Railroad Association's very involved. Uh, Secretary Pete Buttigieg is paying attention and very involved, uh, from Washington DC. I think that for the first time in a long time, people are listening to us and our complaints about trains. And without that article in ProPublica, none of this is happening, so I do want to say thank you to those reporters that did that article, got attention across the country, it's a scary situation. So, a couple more things, I'm almost done, Four-Sand volleyball courts are being added to the sportsplex, we knew that. Department of Public Works' employees are doing the project, I'm funding it out of Mayor's Gaming, uh, they got it dug out, everything's on order, it should be up and running by summer. Festival of Lakes lineup is set, I think most people know the lineup. Wednesday, July twelfth, Ashante and Ja Rule. Thursday, July thirteenth, Brothers Osborne. Friday, July fourteenth, Stone Temple Pilots. Saturday, July fifteenth, Lil Wayne, ticketed event, Lil Wayne Concert. Sunday, July sixteenth, El Flaco. Uh, last but not least, I know today we have a resolution on agenda to dedicate an honorary street designation in honor of Frank Van Til. Uh, everybody in this room knows who Frank Van Til it was, is, he's a legend in the city of Hammond, born in nineteen forty-six. First home, uh, his first home was on the corner of Jackson and Vine, in the back of the first Van Til's grocery store. Van Til's supermarket where he worked in many capacities, including egg sorter, stalker, and produce before becoming a store manager. He's been awarded, Frank Van Til's been awarded Lake Shore Chambers Man of the Year, Lake Shore Chambers Business of the Year. He's been given key to the city of Hammond, and the community is desirous of recognizing Frank Van Til's service with a fitting and appropriate tribute, which is designating the sixty-eight-hundred block of McCook Avenue to commemorate and remember the efforts sacrificed in here and all of the, you know, the great things that Frank Van Til did for the city of Hammond. So, I want to thank Councilman Warple for carrying the ball on that situation, uh, 'cause we couldn't have done it for a better person, so. Uh, if there's not any questions, I apologize to the council for my long report and wrap up my report. I'm not sure if there's questions, Councilman. All right, nice to see you all again.
Mayor.
Oh, hey, hey, Councilman.
It's more of a comment than a question, but, um, there's been quite a few people stating that the trains aren't a problem in Hesville no more. Um, I know, since the last council, council meeting, I've been out there ten times in ten days, there were trains blocking the crossings out there. And you stated that, that the railroad contacted you about, you know, after that meeting, and it's not like the city's sitting back doing nothing about it. I mean, I, I've heard the comment made, oh, the trains aren't a problem no more, they just disappeared, that's not the case.
Well, I've heard a couple of things, Councilman Warple, um, I've heard that we've been in discussions, active discussions with Norfolk Southern and FRA, the Federal Railroad Administration. And from what I, and I don't live in Hesville, I live in Woodmar, I drive through Hesville almost every day. I haven't, I saw a stop train the other day. But from what I hear from people that live closer to the tracks than I, is it's gotten better since the ProPublica article. Now, if this is the case, I don't, I don't want to bet Hammond's future, Hesville's future on it's gonna stay that way a year from now, five years from now, ten years from now, when everybody forgot about that newspaper article. The fact is, the only way to get us around and over these stop trains is to build bridges. You know, it's not gonna get stopped by the state of Indiana, 'cause the state is powerless, it's not gonna see it stopped by the city of Hammond, 'cause we're powerless. Washington DC isn't doing anything about it. If we build bridges, they can't stop us. So, I think between the two proposals we're talking about, which is Governor's Parkway, the bridge that Indot's financing, that's gonna take care of most of the problem, and I acknowledge there's still some problem. That's why we're talking about this second bridge. We have identified an area where the bridge would work, we've identified what would be necessary for that to happen, and now we're trying to wrap up the resources to get it done. And if we do both of these bridges, I could look anybody that lives in Hesville straight in the face and say, we fixed your problem, we did. It's still gonna stop, the trains are still gonna stop, but we'll be able to function in Hesville. We'll be able to get ambulances to your house, we'll be able to get police officers to where they need to be. Right now, we can't guarantee you that. So, if it has gotten better, Councilman Warple, I've heard that from people in the community, but I wouldn't bet our future on it. 'Cause we got their attention right now, I think you hit while the iron's hot, and the iron is white-hot right now, that's why we're working with them, so. I do, I do acknowledge it may have gotten better recently, but like I said, I wouldn't bet on it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman, any other questions? Thank you, Council, it's good to see you all.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, now for distribution of scholarship awards?
Yes, um, just to brief, to talk about what the scholarship is, the Hammond Common Council gives out fifteen one-thousand-dollar scholarships to Hammond Indiana High School graduating seniors. Um, couple, um, not too long ago, we draw those names and today we'll be honoring those recipients. The scholarship is given to all of our Hammond residents and that's including in the Whiting-Robertsdale area, um, that have that address as well. Um, because I know that there's been some confusion, some residents have given a call, they were not understanding, so wanted to make that part clear. Today, we have Dr. Amy Roush, the Executive Director of Secondary Education. We have Ms. Jennifer, is it Rikers? The Assistant Principal at Hammond Central. We have Jeremy Hicks, the Principal of Morton High School, and Bill Danko, the Assistant Principal of Morton High School here today. Um, as well, even though she's not going to be standing today, I do want to recognize her, Laney Kaminsky, the Executive Assistant for Secondary Curriculum at the school city of Hammond. So, I now turn it over to you all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tyler, Hammond Council, thank you so much for having us this evening, and thank you for helping our students in Hammond uh, move on to the next chapter of, of whatever it is that they decide to do, and at this time, we're going to, uh, make sure that, uh, we give recognition to those students. I'm going to present for Hast and Bishop Noel. So, if, uh, Elizabeth Guzman, if you are here, please come forward. And students, when you come forward, if you could, uh, sorry, if you could state your name and what your, where your plan on going to school, and then what you plan on studying.
Um, my name's Elizabeth Guzman, um, I'm going to Ball State University, um, I plan on studying, um, marine biology.
Thank you. And then we'll take a picture afterward. And then for Bishop Noel, Jaclyn Rosso. Okay, send it over to Hammond Central.
Good evening. From Hammond Central High School, Carolina Barrigan. Congratulations.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Carolina Barrigan, I'm going to Indiana University Northwest, where I will be majoring in radiologic technology.
Janaya Cole.
Hello, I'm Janaya Cole, I'll be attending Calumet College and, um, something I'll be majoring in is criminal justice.
Israel Diaz. America Guerrero.
Hello, my name is America Guerrero, and I will be going to Ball State University, and I'll be majoring in business information systems.
Kaylee Jackson.
Hi, my name is Kaylee Jackson, I'll be going to IUPY and studying nursing.
Camila Marquez. Braylin Norwood.
My name's Braylin Norwood, I'm gonna go to Purdue University Northwest, and I'm gonna study biology.
Good evening and thank you. For Morton High School, the first award recipient is Jasmine Avila. Next award recipient is Trinity Belford. Madison Fleming. Angel Navarez. Megan Whitford.
Hi, I'm Megan Whitford, I'll be pretend, or I'll be attending Purdue Northwest for early education.
And our sixth scholarship award recipient is Christian Zarco. Thank you.
One more, Camila Marquez.
Um, my name is Camila Marquez, I'm going to Purdue Northwest, and I want to major in English.
Just want to congratulate each one of our scholarship recipients, and I'm asking that we suspend the rules at this time to take a photo.
There's a motion to suspend the rules, is there a second?
Second.
All right, uh, rules are suspended? Sorry, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Ricles. Tyler.
Yes. Uh, motion passes nine-zero. Anybody that would like to leave can do so, but you're also free to stay for the rest of our meeting, too.
Mister President, I make a motion that we return to regular business?
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Clerk Golick, roll call?
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Ricles. Tyler.
Yes. Uh, motion passes nine-zero. All right, returning back to regular business, approval of minutes?
Mister President?
Uh, Councilman Spitali.
Take a motion to accept minutes from May eighth, two thousand twenty-three, be placed on file, please.
Second. Uh, motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson. Any discussion? We don't need a roll call. Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Ricles. Tyler.
Yes. All right, minutes passed, uh, nine-zero. Approval of claims?
Mister President.
Uh, Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move to, um, approve the claims, beginning with claims dated May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and ending with claims dated five-seventeen of two thousand twenty-three. Claim number twenty-eight oh-seven through claim number thirty-one fifty-two inclusive in the amount of eleven million, three hundred seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty-two cents, I so move.
Second. Uh, motion by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call?
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Emerson. Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Ricles. Tyler.
Yes. Claims pass nine-zero. Uh, now, public hearings, there are none, moving forward to communications. Any communications?
Count, uh, Mister President.
Councilman Warple.
Under communications, I want to remind everybody that the police memorial service will be held Thursday, May twenty-fifth at two PM outside of the police station. And not only is the entire council invited, but so is the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any more communications? Any more communications? Any more communications? All right, moving on to committee reports.
Mister Pres-
Go ahead, now go ahead.
Mister President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, yes, I'd like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. Uh, Community Watch at Mount Zion Pleasant Few Plaza will not meet until August, so mark your calendar for that. Uh, East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet, uh, Tuesday, June twentieth, six PM at the Ophelia Steen Center. Edison Community Watch will not meet until September, when schools, uh, starts back up again. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet, uh, Tuesday, June sixth. They are also planning a block party that will be on July twenty-second, that date has changed, from twelve to four PM, and it's tentatively at Harrison Park. Hesville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, June fifteenth, uh, if I can read my writing correct, I hope June fifteenth is correct. Um, and that begins at six PM. Irving Community Watch will not meet until school starts up again in September. South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch, uh, will not meet until sometime in October. And Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, June eighth, six-thirty PM at Calumet College. Um, I did want to reiterate, excuse me, uh, Councilman Warple's announcement, uh, for the annual memorial at, uh, the police station this coming Thursday at two PM. Um, please come out. These are men and women who have given their life so we can sleep at night, knowing that they are there to protect us. So please come out and, um, and show your respect to these men and women. I would also like to announce that, uh, the, um, uh, Free Security Light Program is coming up. Uh, this is for two thousand twenty-three. There are sixty lights available, uh, that means ten lights per district. You must own and reside in your Hammond home. You must provide proof of home ownership, and you must provide a valid driver's license or state ID. Uh, applications will be taken in person only, June twelfth through June sixteenth, on the third floor of City Hall in room three-sixteen. Uh, this is sponsored by, uh, Mayor McDermott, of course, Hammond Community Watch, Hammond Community Development, and Hammond Urban Enterprise Association. Uh, this is a great opportunity for, uh, our residents to light up their property to deter crime. So I urge everyone to come to City Hall, uh, but to, between June twelfth and June sixteenth, uh, because supplies are limited. Uh, they're, um, uh, on a first-come, first-served basis. So, uh, I want everyone to remember that community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mister President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vines. Any more committee reports?
See ya.
Mister President.
Councilwoman Warple.
Capital Improvements Board, met Monday, or Monday, May fifteenth. Um, under new business, the funding allocation for the Marquette-Greenway Trail Kennedy Decline Supplemental Engineering Platte Survey in the amount of thirty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars was approved. Funding allocation for the two thousand twenty-three sidewalk program with J.J. Newell Concrete Contractors in the amount of three hundred thousand was approved. And the funding allocation for the two thousand twenty-three roadway maintenance, pavement preservation, crack sealing in the amount of three hundred thousand was also approved, and it was also stated that under the sidewalk program and the crack sealing program, um, fifty thousand dollars will be spent in all six districts.
Thank you, Councilman Warple. Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee reports are now closed. Uh, introduction, sorry, ordinance third and final reading. There are none. Moving forward to introduction of ordinances. There are none. Uh, Clerk Golick, resolutions?
Item eight, resolution twenty-three R dash zero five, sponsored by Councilman Warple. A resolution of the Hammond Common Council to dedicate an honorary street designation in honor of Frank Van Tiel.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
I move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Uh, there's a motion on the floor, seconded by Councilman Torres. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Uh, Councilman Warple.
The mayor, in his speech, pretty much read the ordinance word for word. Uh, anybody that is confused on where this might be, it is the sixty-eight hundred block of McCook Avenue. It's the street that runs between Van Tiel's supermarket and what used to be the Walgreens is now, I think, a liquor store. And at one time, it was a Blockbuster Video. It was the site, off-site. There's one resident that lives on that street, and again, it's an honorary naming, and even the one resident agrees with the honorary naming. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Warple. Any more discussion?
Uh, Mr. President.
Uh, Councilman Emerson.
Uh, by way of, uh, information, and I thank, uh, Councilman Warple for sponsoring this, there is a series of pictures, and they may be at other stores, but on one hundred and sixty-ninth Street at the Strack and Van Tiel's, uh, at various, uh, portions that are mentioned, including, uh, on Jackson and Vine, uh, the house that he first started out with, uh, and, and the store. Uh, the store was in the front, uh, and other pictures of, of supermarkets, uh, that the Van Tiel family have owned. So it's one hundred and sixty-ninth that have, it's right near the shopping carts. Uh, so if you, if you happen to be in that store, take a look at some of those pictures. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Emerson. Any more discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
I'd like to be added as a sponsor to that resolution.
Any more discussion?
I'm gonna take the council, so I'll be on that resolution also.
Mr. President, I agree.
All right, Clerk Golick, please, uh, let it reflect that the entire council will be listed as sponsor. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes. Resolution twenty-three R oh five passes nine zero.
Mr. President.
President.
Just, I forgot to add this. Um, there will be a street dedication and a time and date to be named later, too. It depends on the health of Mr. Van Tiel and when the city can line that all up.
Sorry.
President Taylor, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. All right, moving on to new and unfinished, new and unfinished business. Anybody have any new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
Um, this, uh, the following Monday, uh, five twenty-nine, twenty-three, the Memorial Day Parade, uh, will, and it's sponsored by the Mohawks. Uh, the lineup is at ten A.M. and the step-off is at eleven A.M. And I mention this, uh, because on Memorial Day, we honor all those that never returned from battle. And, uh, all gave some and some gave all. And we honor those that gave all that day. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Emerson. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Uh, Councilman Kalwinski.
After the parade, where it ends at St. Casper's, there will be a memorial service with prayer, laying of wreaths, raising of the flag, guns salute, songs by the play by a band. Uh, and then after that, all are welcome to the Hammond Mohawks at Calumet and one hundred forty-first for refreshments, chips and hot dogs. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Kalwinski, do you have a start time for that program? I know you said right after the parade, but is there estimated start time?
For what program?
The program following the parade.
After the parade? And I can't give you a, a time for that.
Okay.
Twelve to twelve-thirty probably.
Thank you. Uh, any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Uh, Councilman Warple.
Um, earlier this afternoon, I don't know how many of you got them on the south side of Hammond there, but I got several text messages, phone calls about pretty much all the railroad crossings in Hammond. They're blocked. Not by a train, but barricades were put up and they're pretty much all blocked. And from the best that I've been told is that's not a city project. That is the railroad itself doing work on the intersections and how long they're gonna be blocked. I wouldn't anticipate a long time, but I wasn't given an answer on how long that would take, so. I told a couple people, if I got an answer on what that was, I would let them know. So I'm letting you know that it's got to do with work on the actual crossings themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakels.
Yeah, so, this railroad work kind of, this is a crossing, one seventy-third, grand. We're opened up, this, uh, this was even by four thirty to five, I was told. So it should take a while, if they're going through, and it should be a little bit long.
Thank you.
And it is a railroad.
Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Uh, time for public expression. First name on the list is Carl, I'm sorry, I can't use your last name.
Munz.
Munz.
Plunt.
Plunt, sorry.
Can everybody hear me? Mr. President, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Rakels, my councilman, on his recent victory in the primary election. Um, myself, I'm a lifelong resident of Hammond. I have, with the exception of the time that I was on active duty in the military, uh, the Marine Corps, and then the C.B.'s board deployed in Iraq in two thousand and six. My current employer is Volunteers of America, and they have a program called SPACES. That's an acronym that stands for Suicide Prevention and Community Education Services. The emphasis really is on the big P and the E, prevention and education. Uh, it's pretty much a common knowledge item that twenty-two veterans a day are taking their lives for different reasons. Uh, our program is open to Lake and Porter Counties, uh, and I'm the Indiana local representative. I, um, say that there are many suicide prevention programs out there. Um, we are VA-funded, so it's a grant, but, uh, we have a lot more mobility than the VA does. Um, baseline mental health services, uh, case management, individual support, uh, as well as income support are part of what we do. Um, given the veteran has a discharge as anything but dishonorable, we will accept a majority of those folks. Um, it's a matter of outreach and that's what I'm here to do tonight. But, um, we have wraparound services. We, um, also, at the veteran's request, we can engage the family as well as part of our services, uh, agenda. Unlike the V.A., um, all we need is a firm yes from that person. Uh, they present a DD two fourteen or discharge certificate and we can move them into the program. Um, we are one of the few community-based providers, and this has just started as of January this year, and I was, uh, hired on in March, so, um, I'll be around and if anybody needs contact information, I'll be available after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next up is TJ Garrdick.
Hi, guys. Uh, Happy Memorial Day, everyone. Um, uh, I just wanted to encourage everyone, uh, I've been getting out a lot, and I wanted to encourage everyone to get out to the Briar East Woodland Dunes, uh, to see all the new foliage that's come up. Um, the forest is looking very vibrant and also very clean. Um, we will be planning another dune cleanup, uh, coming up for, uh, a couple remaining spots, uh, that have some garbage in there, but by and large, it's looking great. Um, I would like to also remind everyone that the deadline for written public comment on the NDOT public hearing for Governor's Parkway Bridge is coming up this Friday on May twenty-sixth. Um, the, the proposed bridge destroys the Briar East Dunes and does not help with children climbing over trains. The city is now in communication with the railroad regarding this issue, and they've, and the railroad has offered, uh, to help with the construction of a pedestrian bridge. Um, and as the mayor noted, uh, the, the, the problem of the railroad blocking train crossings has declined since the pro-public article was published. And so it seems like we are now in a time of new opportunities, thanks to the railroad's, uh, cooperation and media coverage. And I think we should jump on this, uh, opportunity to choose a better plan, um, and underpass. We should push as a city and a community to achieve a solution that is best for everyone. So anyone can find more information regarding future dune cleanups and the NDOT public hearing on the Facebook page, Hessville Dune Dusters. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. George Stoye. All right, seen any passes? Our, our public expression is now closed. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels. Taylor.
Yes, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.